Good.
Light was off.
Okay. Good, Jamie?
Give me two seconds. We're good.
Thank you. Okay, good afternoon and welcome to council Monday, August twenty second, twenty twenty two. Calling me toward at four P M. As always, remind everybody turn off their mobile devices, put them on vibrate. Thank you. Any additions or additions to the agenda today? Hearing none, seeing none. We have a motion here. Counsel hereby accepts the agenda for Monday, August twenty second, twenty twenty two, regeme of council, surveyor amended, move by. Counsel balance, certainly counsel, all favor? Very, thank you. Counsel, I think it could be attended today. Any disclosure of interests? Hearing that, I do have a motion here that council hereby does miss the regeme of council in November, July, even two thousand and twenty two. The surveyor amended, I'm thinking about that. That's what the Bushy counselor. And the errors, missions, those bits. Hearing that, call question, all favor? Very, thank you. Hey, today we have a delegation that's going to make a presentation on bylaw and all control to allow keeping domesticated poultry chickens in residential areas with minimum supply. So I'd like to wait till the Jim and Aurora are down to give us an overview of their presentation.
And who said, ready for?
The Honorable Mayor Dumas and the members of town council. My name is Aurora Lynn Carmen. Historically, dating back to the eighteen hundreds, backyard chickens have been the backbone of many, many family properties by providing limited chickens, fresh eggs, meat, and education to younger family members. This was the precursor. This was the precursor to modern poultry, production, and specialized farming. With modernization such as refrigeration and large food productions, backyard chickens lost popularity. This has changed in recent years. Today, backyard are urban chickens and urban farming such as community gardens have grown in popularity. Even a church in Marathon established a community garden. With standards for care and conditions, backyard chickens provide a safe source of food, but is self-sustaining, local, organic, and cost-effective. The COVID nineteen pandemic has also created a greater food insecurity and exposed vulnerabilities in the food supply chain. We've already seen temporary egg shortages in the supermarkets and a noticeable increase in the cost of meat. I'm here to ask council to consider amending by law twenty three point three to allow Marathon residents to legally own and raise a limited number of chickens for eggs and meat. I love animals. I'm sure that most of you do as well. In my younger years, I first fell in love when introduced to a family member's horse in St. Mary's, and I have never looked back. I was lucky enough to find a farm close to Marathon where I got to see chickens, turkeys, goats, and rabbits, and goats, rabbits, and more. I learned how animals were raised, and I found out that I really liked chickens. I got an incubator and some eggs I hoped to fertilize and began. It took around twenty one days for them to hatch, but after eighteen days, I had to stop turning them to make sure there's lots of water for humidity. The first to come out of their egg, we named Kevin. This one immediately became the family favorite. It is the cutest thing to watch them grow, even though I know that one day I will eat all their children and someday them. Now, after finding out it is against the law in Marathon and losing our favorite chicken in transport, my dad will see if I know to do a poll, or box me three hundred fifty participants answered. Almost seventy percent of see if we know listeners agree that municipalities should allow chickens on residential properties. I came here today with my father to ask if you agree with the majority of see if we know listening area. You agree that chickens should be allowed in all, in all of our backyards in Marathon? Should the bylaw be changed to reflect the current reality of our times? The prices are only going to get more expensive. I talked to my grandfather and found out that there has been chickens, pigs, and other animals in Marathon for as long as he can remember. I know of other families that have backyard chickens and now others that want them. It seems like common sense to me is that they have always been here without concern. Why can't we have our chickens now? Why not change the bylaw so that families who want to and will want to continue raising backyard chickens won't be breaking the law? I'm here to ask council to consider amending by law twenty three point three to allow residents to legally own and raise a limited number of chickens for meat and eggs for personal consumption. I would like to thank you for my time. Thank you for your time, and happy to have this opportunity to present my case to you.
Well, great. Thanks a lot. Excellent overview of the raising of chickens within our community. So I'm going to open up to the council to see if they have any questions directly via first, and then we'll go through that. Anybody have any questions? So I have a couple, and I think, you know, the presentation is great to identify local food supplies because that is a key, not only in chickens, but in all aspects of foods, you know, with the way the pandemic created the shortage of supplies within and the distribution of supplies. Then we all noticed that in all aspects of our life. So that's great part of your presentation. Council has discussed this in the past as well, and we never really made any move on it because there was no real presentation by the council about having it in a serious manner. So I can encourage you to continue to look at those opportunities, and we will discuss this. It's not, it's not going to be discussed here today. That's the way the delegation wants. We just, you take your presentation, we listen to you, and then we discuss it, and we'll bring back a recommendation to council, a sort of administration from council on the bylaw change. So I appreciate you coming in today and giving us an overview of what you think is probably for raising chickens, and, and we'll have deliberation on that and bring back an answer in short order to you and let you know what council's thought is on that.
Okay, thank you.
Great. I really appreciate your, your presentation, and you did a great job. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, girl. Appreciate it. Thanks a lot. We'll move right into the other part of the council business. A report on the Marathon Public Library Building lease, called to all members, Mr. Squirtzky.
So thanks your worship. The current lease agreement between the Town of Marathon and the Marathon Public Library Board for use of twenty six Peninsula Row, Unit B, is set to expire September thirtieth of this year. The original lease came into effect on October first, two thousand and seven. Administration has been in consult, in consultation with the board with respect to renewing the current lease under the same terms and conditions. Key items in the renewed agreement would include a term of five years from October the first of two thousand and twenty two to September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty seven. Ability to renew the agreement for an additional five years upon mutual agreement. The tenant shall be responsible for all utility costs. The tenant shall not assign or sublet the lease or space, and during the entire term of the lease, the tenant shall take out and maintain at its cost and expense appropriate insurance coverage, and the town shall be named as an additional insured under that coverage. Financial implications, as with the expiring agreement, the new lease agreement will charge one dollar as rent for the entire lease term. Options for council, enter into a new lease agreement with the Marathon Public Library Board, or B, do not enter into a new lease agreement, and your administration recommends that option A be selected, and that the mayor clerk be authorized to enter into a lease agreement with the Marathon Public Library Board for the period of October first, two thousand and twenty two, to September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty seven.
Great. Thanks for that report. I do have a motion here that council hereby accept the attached report and recommendation on the public library building lease agreement. And for that, if the bylaw be adopted there in this meeting, enter into an agreed lease agreement between the Town of Marathon and the Marathon Public Library. Move by. Counsel balance, second by counsel, which any questions? Very straightforward. Counsel balance, counsel. All in favor? Great, thank you. So thanks. We have report on the compliance audit committee, two thousand and twenty two municipal elections. I'll be all members, Miss these, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Under section eighty eight point thirty seven one of the Municipal Elections Act, council shall before October first of an election year establish a committee for the purpose of a compliance audit committee. The purpose of the compliance audit committee is to address applications requesting an audit of the candidate's election campaign finances. The committee must have a minimum of three members and serves for the term of council, which is two thousand and twenty two to two thousand and twenty six. School boards are responsible for their own compliance audit committees and any expenses that occur. In previous election cycles, since two thousand and ten, the townships of Scriber, Terrace Bay, and Manitowoc, and the Town of Marathon agreed to establish a joint committee by appointing the clerks of each other's municipalities to the committee. Details of this arrangement are outlined in the attached bylaw. The four municipalities have agreed that expenses will be paid by the community that requires an audit. The options are to adopt by law twenty thirty one, appointing the clerk to the joint compliance audit committee, or option B, which is do not adopt by law twenty thirty one, and attempt to advertise and appoint interested individuals to the Marathon Compliance Audit Committee. Recommendations are your, your administration recommends that option A be selected, and that by law twenty thirty one be adopted, appointing the clerk to the joint compliance audit committee with the townships of Manitowoc, Scriber, and Terrace Bay.
Great. Thanks for that report. I do have motion here. Counsel hereby accept the attached regulation of compliance audit committee for two thousand and twenty two municipal elections, and for that, the bylaw be adopted later in this meeting, appointing the clerk for the Town of Marathon to the joint compliance audit committee with the township of Manitowoc, Scriber, and Terrace Bay. Move by. Counsel, which counsel balance, any questions on that?
Thanks for the motion.
Okay, so I see that there is a minimum or three members. Is the rationale that you have the four clerks of the community so that if Marathon was the one who did it or requested that audit, you would not sit on the committee? So you would not be, I guess, in conflict with one of your colleagues?
Correct. The clerk of the municipality that the audit is being done in would be the, the secretary of that committee.
Anything else?
Are audits only held if there's like an issue, or is there like random audits?
Anybody could request an audit of anybody's candidates than financial finances.
So everybody who's running for elections, and by the way, congratulations to all, looking forward to the, the campaigning. You must keep good records so that you don't have a problem with an audit if it's ever brought to your attention.
Or request.
All good? All in favor? Very, thank you. Yeah, next we have a motion to check runs to be approved. The following, July, two thousand and twenty two check runs be approved per payment. Council bill in the amount of seven hundred and seventy four thousand, one hundred and ninety three dollars and ninety three cents, and payroll in the amount of two hundred and two thousand, six hundred and ninety two dollars and sixty four cents. Move by. Counsel balance, second by counsel, which any questions of those check runs? Very, good, Terry. Thank you. Yeah, next we have just a verbal update on the attendance at AMO that Counsel Sukie, myself, and the CEO Scortinsky attended on behalf of the municipal council. She was going to give us highlight on some of his activities.
Yeah, it was a, it was a very valuable experience for me with my first conference as a young counselor for this, and then having your worship and Mrs. Squirtzinsky, you know, by my side, kind of show me the ropes a little bit, was a good learning experience, good opportunity to learn from their, their experience with being a clerk and a mayor. The delegations I found were probably one of the most interesting parts, just kind of see how effective the Town of Marathon is at getting their message across the table, and shouldn't there be looking for any support or funding? They were able to do so successfully. So we met with Ontario Ministry of Mines, and just to give them an update on the generation mining project across the road, and they seem to be, to be very supportive from what I gathered. Also met with Infrastructure Ontario, which discussed the, the opportunity of an active living center here in Marathon, and then a couple of different delegations with Ministry of Energy and Embridge discussing the natural gas project in Marathon as well. See if, you know, gain any, any traction, but that also seemed interesting as well.
Great. Thanks a lot. I really appreciate you there. And yeah, as you stated, you did, you did participate in all those meetings. And I think, you know, it's a great learning tool for not just the new council, but any councils to attend and participate on behalf of the municipality. Well, thanks for that, Counsel Sukie. Yeah, it was a busy weekend for myself. I attended on behalf of the community for representation for Noma, as well as AMO and Roma, and I had a lot of different agendas and a lot of different items to be discussed. To give you a quick overview, our normal board meeting, we took place on Saturday to discuss our proposals to the government, and of course, easier items that we've addressed with the government asking to either resolve or take off the, the books, since we don't have to keep coming back. So Minister Clark was very open to that. So Noma put out in their presentation in regards to the out funding. We asked for that to be a stable funding model that also was going to be non-fitting at each communities. We got some pushback in regards to C R F funding. The Wolfson funding was part of the program. The, the Nord's funding was new funding, but we said, no, we want to stick to the funding, which is the Ontario Civil Partnership Fund. Our treasurer needs to have that indicated for the long period of time, so we need to depend on those funding. So that's a huge part of all our municipalities' budgets. We then talked about the sale of Crown land. As you know, with Anderson boundaries, we have twenty kilometers within our boundaries. We can't sell anything outside of the municipality proper unless we go back to the Crown to ask for that. So with all the housing needs and the, the communities that are really in desperate need of land, they have to go to the Crown to get approval. So we want to get that taken care of, and we told the government that it's a win-win. Sell some of those pieces of land. We can consult with our First Nations neighbors directly, and we will have no problem getting those, those dollars. Again, railway taxation, as we, we talked about, not only that this time is railway taxation, we need to address, they're open for, for discussions around that, so that's going to move forward, and the crossings. We know what we experience when it refers to the cost of our crossing. So a lot of municipalities feel the same thing. So the government is, is open for more discussions around the railway taxation piece. So with the, the problem with the south and the east and the northwest and the northeast is the people mover, freight mover scenario. So they're working on that, and we're pleased that there will be some results hopefully coming forward over the next year on that, that one as well. EMS and public health, obviously, these are big areas where there were, we hear news every day about the mountain shortages, both in paramedics as well as nursing, and, and not only that, the closure potential of the public health units from taking, you know, say Marathon geographically to Thunder Bay, you know, shutting down public health in Marathon, you'd have to have Thunder Bay for the public health office. That's not appropriate. You know, downtown Toronto, you might have six public health and square, ten square blocks. Makes sense to amalgamate those. So we made it very clear that, that we could have those stations and also those, those healthiness amalgamated in S G grab here. So they're open to listen to that as well. Then, of course, Noma give all the backgrounders, which we always do, and we give solutions to the government. Then AMO, we, with AMO, our mask, we're government. This was a, a big meeting. We, we had a lot of discussion around, of course, the AMO department itself, and AMO's conversation was the biggest on record. It was twenty one hundred delegates. Obviously, we, we've all been kept, you know, up in two years, two and a half years in our homes, and no travel, and no meeting in person. So it was, it was really well attended. Lots of great presentations over the three days, three and a half, four days, actually. The, the meeting that we discussed a lot of stuff for AMO going to the government was the amount of coverage and the big part of it, and I, there was a whole lot of stuff, and I won't go through all the stuff, but a big part of it was Bill Three. We spent a lot of time on Bill Three. If you're not familiar with Bill Three, Bill Three is the powers that the government just gave the city of Toronto and the city of Ottawa, that the mayor has the veto power and basically can run the municipality. The AMO board, along with Noma, and all disagree with that. We don't, we don't want that. Nobody, no mayors knows those boards want that power. But the government has, under Bill Three, given the power to Toronto and Ottawa right now.
So then would each council of the municipalities have to create a bylaw to agree to that? Or is it already mapped? Like, they can already run with the power if they wanted to?
Right now, it's, it's just Toronto and Ottawa, but the government said they want to roll it out throughout the province to all municipalities under the, under the municipal act. So AMO put a paper and a response back to the government. We had a lot of deliberation around that because there are people in our AMO board to support that, you know, mayor power, and majority of us don't support the mayor's power.
And is that a benefit for like the two-tier municipalities down south? Or like, where does that come from?
No, I think what it is, is you're going to see your bigger centers with discussion we had around it was the bigger centers with the mayor having a veto power. You have a dysfunctional council, so the strong mayor, weak mayor scenario, and this council's running the, the show, and they can join. So if you have a ten-member council with a mayor, eleven members, ten members can get, you know, but the mayor still only has one vote, but they're saying this is good for the mayor to build the veto of those rogue council people. So there's a whole debate, and I don't know why the government feel they give the net power to the cities of Toronto and Ottawa and continue throughout the province. Counsel, which?
Yeah, but from my understanding, and from the portion of it, the council still can override the veto with the two-thirds or the majority. Is that not what was proposed in the law?
No, sir. It's the complete power to the mayor. He can hire, fire the whole administration staff, and he can veto any, any resolution comes to council as, as we stand for Toronto and Ottawa right now.
Because that's not how I understood the.
That's, well, we had a confession policy writers give us an overview of that policy from the government, from AMO. So that's the, the information we, we debated on for probably better part of three hours at our meeting. It was quite, quite the debate. Then, of course, the, the government was asked by Noma, by AMO representative patient to, in the M O U table, to continue funding some of the mitigation costs that were impacting through the communities through COVID. So there's still an ongoing impact to communities, and not all, of course, but a lot of communities are still seeing impact with that. The Noma delegations we had was with those ministers. We also had the opportunity to meet with the, the, and, and Nasdra, Nasdra, the Minister of Service to the Board on housing, mental health, and addictions. Of course, that's a big one. I said in the housing committee for AMO, there's a big shortage of housing. You know, we might not see in our small rural communities, but in a, any urban center, there's a huge impact. And, and I can, I'm sure Counsel Sukie and, and CEO Scortinsky have seen things in Ottawa that weren't there three years ago in regards to street homelessness, and people lying and on streets and sleeping on streets. They're just amazing. So that was a huge impact as well. Then Roma on Sunday was also in regards to the, the, those various items. And Roma is similar to Noma, but I attended their meeting on behalf of Noma, and we discussed various things with woodbox transition, as we all talked about in the past, Ontario Drainage Jack, a lot of that's done with Southern Ontario, the verbal housing update, the Evacuation of Emergency Management Acts, long-term energy improvement updates, and broadband, which is, we're all experiencing also. That was a good meeting I also attended. And of course, on behalf of the town, which is our main goal to go to, to the conference was, as Counsel Sukie identified, meeting with Minister Rickford on the Port Authority, with their relationship with BN in partnership, the Marathon Critical Minerals Project, I calling it Critical Minerals Project, it's the Palladium Project, but as governments, both federal and provincial, now have the environmental assessment in their, in their possession. They have up to a hundred and twenty days to give an answer to the, the permanent generation mine. So we're, we're hoping that that will happen quicker, sooner than the hundred and twenty days. But we, we made our argument to how important it was to our community and the region for First Nations neighbors, as well as the, the urban centers, as well as the province and the, and the country of Canada. We also had the opportunity, as Counsel Sukie identified, to meet with the Minister Pierre with the, the Minister of Mines. He's a newly appointed minister, newly elected Timmins Mayor, past Timmins Mayor, and worked in the mining sector all his life, and he was great, great on top. He knew everything. Well, the mining knew a lot of people that we knew in person, named off a lot of friends that worked in Timmins and Marathon. So the connection was really good, and he very supportive of the project as well as, his, his response was going back and talking to his ministerial counterparts, his peers that are going to be impacted with the mining sector, which would be environment, natural forces, mining, and, and northern development. He also identified that he would be meeting with federal minister, Minister Wilkinson, that following week. So he was going to arrange that discussion around that. So that was very positive. I had opportunities also to meet with Grayden Smith. Grayden Smith's newly appointed Minister of Natural Resources and Forestry, and Grayden is also sat on our AMO board for the last two years as president. So I have good relationship with Grayden. So that was very good, and talked to, to him in, in length about, of course, the Caribou, the Caribou issues around the environmental assessment. And then, of course, we had a meeting with infrastructure, talking about our active living center, and we put a proposal, Mrs. Squirtzky presented, and we'll see what comes out of that. And we still work with the government trying to come up with a great energy, sorry, a great financial model that they might be able to adopt, and maybe we can work through that. So that's something Mrs. Squirtzky can, I'm sure, will touch on. And of course, meeting with Minister, Minister of Energy, as, as an ongoing discussion around the L N G or compressed gas network with five communities, London or Shore. He did indicate there might be a potential intake three coming this fall. So we'll see where we sit with that. And it was a great, great five days in Ottawa, and we've got a lot accomplished. So any other questions? Let me know. Thank you. Scortzky.
Yeah, not a lot to add. I think both yourself and Counsel Sukie highlighted most of our, our activities. It was a busy few days we were there. A couple of things in the sessions that seemed to come through this year stronger than most years was a real focus on electrification and moving to less energy efficient vehicle, or more energy efficient, less fossil fuel type, not just vehicles, but reduction towards climate change. There were a lot of sessions focused around that. Housing was probably the number one topic I mentioned, as a mayor indicated. Homelessness is certainly an issue in the, in the larger centers, but I think we're starting to see that creep into a lot of our smaller centers as well. And tied to that was mental health and the impact that's having on society. So seemed to be a, a much more health issue focused education sessions this year than in past years. And for myself personally, I finally, you know, after two and a half years, had the opportunity to meet with my fellow CAOs. So we have a Northwestern Ontario CAO's group outside of Thunder Bay that meet on a quarterly basis to, you know, go over issues and, and discuss strategies and share ideas. So it was great to get together face to face to finally do that at the AMO conference. So I, I think it was, it was successful, and I think, you know, our message around the Palladium Project certainly came through loud and clear with all the ministries that we met.
There's one, one thing I didn't mention, and we, we were trying to be with Minister Chini, and he was really just overbooked. So we, we did leave that with staff, just chief of staff, and they're going to arrange a discussion around that, but felt very comfortable with discussion with chief of staff. There was no need for a meeting. Minister Chini fully is aware of the Marathon situation, the mines, reports to the region. We met with him in Roma in February, so he's fully aware. And then, you know, the joint meeting with Mr. Gilbo on the federal level. We met with Mr. Haideu Darrell, sorry, Mrs. Squirtzky and Mr. Sukie on, on Friday morning of last week, discussed the importance of that. She indicated clearly that she's fully aware of the project, talked to Minister Gilbo, and there was no need to have a meeting with him as well, that he's fully abreast of what's happening and the importance of the project. So we feel very comfortable that all the key players have been identified. The, the panel has submitted their, their response early August, so we got a hundred and twenty days from that point. I think we're, we're excited, and hopefully, with the proponent, you know, providing all the mitigation response that they needed to, to the government, we can have this thing resolved quickly. One other thing, one of the sessions I did attend was around indigenous relationship building, and, and one of the speakers on that panel was Mayor Landry out of Shunia. She's also a member of the Red Rock First Nations Indian Band, and she talked to, and like, and sort of the other panel members about the building of a relationship. And I, so I brought our story, I was called Counsel Balance, part of me, our story quickly to the end of the session. We reached out to our neighbors who were our friends and neighbors, and I know we, we play hockey and we use facilities together. We, we meet each other in grocery stores. We entertain each other at different events and stuff like that. We were there as, as neighbors, but we reached out and said, let's get together and meet. And they were quite surprised that we have a three-month, every quarter or so roughly, get together and have dinner and have a discussion with a light agenda. Nothing too important, but we're trying to build a relationship. And, and so that really, that message went out loud and clear. So I just wanted to share that, how important that was the call. Okay, excuse me, under bylaws, bylaw number twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty thirty one being a bylaw to appoint a compliance audit committee for the two thousand and twenty two to two thousand and twenty six municipal elections. We read it first, second, and third time. It finally passes twenty second day of August, twenty twenty two. Move by. Counsel balance, counsel Sukie. Thank you. Any questions of bylaw? Hearing that, all in favor? Very, thank you. Bylaw number twenty thirty two being a bylaw to authorize the execution of lease between incorporation of Town of Marathon and Marathon Public Library Board be read at per second and third time. It finally passes twenty second day of August, twenty twenty two. Move by. Counsel, the wish sent by Counsel Sukie. Any questions of that? Bylaw? Hearing that, call a question. All in favor? Very, thank you. And we have a motion here that council hereby sports attached residency from the Town of South Bruce Peninsula pertaining to the physician shortage in Ontario. And for that, copy the motion before, not to individual, listen to that original resolution, and even over second floor, Counsel Valance, Counsel DeWishy. Any questions on that? And it's basically the same scenario. We're all, and we talked a bit about before the meeting. We don't want to get into a situation where communities are, are, you know, I guess, having, you know, financial wars with each other, they're trying to attract position. We still have a physician retention officer. We share that with the family health team and, and Barry Kimmel, those costs. And I think we do very well by introducing docs to this region, to this community, and showing you both the rural living, and how, how, how it can really benefit them and, and us. And so we've been successful. And Marathon stories out there, we've, we've all shared it over the And Marathon stories out there, we've, we've all shared it over the years. And I think the government's recognized that with us having anywhere from six to nine doctors on a regular basis. And we haven't had to have really no issues around docs since nineteen ninety five. It's really is a shame. So would you like to share that, Counselor Valance?
Yeah, no, just quickly in conversation with Noch, has there been any type of what we're seeing here locally reflective as to what the province is seeing? Are in conversation with them, are they feeling the pinch as much as healthcare, the other service providers in healthcare in Ontario are? Or what kind of is that looking like here?
Yeah, I haven't spoken specifically on that topic with Mr. Brown, but I, I think we've been somewhat fortunate where, you know, we haven't seen the dramatic effect that we're seeing across the province. And I, I think, you know, as the mayor indicated, you know, we, we have an allied healthcare professionals recruitment team, which has been quite successful, continues to be successful. And I, I think that's, you know, one of the major reasons why. And I think we also have a, a very committed group of doctors here in Marathon, you know, that, that promote Marathon whenever they have that opportunity. So I think, you know, I'm not going to say we've been shielded from it. You know, it, it certainly, it's a concern. But I think the structure we developed back in two thousand and ten is, is really, you know, it's paying off right now, you know, on a go forward basis.
Yeah, if there is concern, we could also reach out to Mr. Brown and ask if there's any concerns with Marathon, the terrorists, the hospitals. You know, send them a call, send them to see if there's concerns. But, you know, I, I'm not really hearing anything in the community. I don't think anybody else is hearing anything in the community. But we don't work in that field directly. So be interested to see if there's any concerns, shortages within the staffing. We know last time we had Mr. Brown represent to us with the, the increase of the fourteen beds add on for long-term care. So you know, that, that will be increasing the actual staff level and seem like to be a benefit and, and a positive message rather than a negative. So be, be interested if we could reach out, maybe to Mr. Brown and ask and give us an update. We can share maybe our next council meeting.
Just stay informed a little bit, yeah, for sure.
Or even if you'd like to come and do an update, what's going on in the health world.
Yeah.
Be connected. Yeah, I'm sure you would do that. Great. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, prior to the adjournment, I want to remind council that we do have a session for closed meeting right after this meeting to discuss. We're going to conclude meeting to discuss personal matters and then identify individual or local board employees. So with that being said, we'll turn it to our four thirty three. Yeah, move by. Counselor Valance, I'd like Counselor Wusheng. Thank you very much and have a great day.
Here.
That was pretty quick.
Yes, thank you. That was a great synopsis.